Start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Teresa puts it back to roll.
Okay, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Friendin.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Wasslerger.
Here.
Mattson.
Yes.
And Jazz.
Here. All right, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, I'd ask for a motion and a second. Second. Any discussion? Airing none, we'll vote Wasslerger. Yes. Mattson.
Yes.
Friendin.
Yep.
Keel.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion or a motion and a second on the meaning, meaning... Wow. Meeting minutes from three twenty-one to twenty-three. Motion approved. Any discussion? Not? We'll vote. O'Hara.
Yes.
Jazz.
I understand.
Keel.
Yes.
Friendin.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wasslerger.
Yes.
All right, no bills?
No, sir.
Thank you. Public comment. Anybody that has any non-agenda items they'd like to address the council on, one of five minutes per person. Seeing none. We'll move down to applications, grievance hearing resolutions, special event permit for a night for land re-benefit, silent auction at Buffalo Ridge. Mr. Chris is here to talk about this. In the packet it is marked to approve by city staff. Chris.
Chris Tushin, Buffalo Ridge. I'll keep it short. The application says, spelled out mostly, but we, sure it is, we were approached by Missnuff Farland to, she's a former resident from the north of town, growing up, currently in Wisconsin, but most of her support structures here. Her young child, I don't know the age, has a very genetic disorder, as I pronounce. She asked for the host to benefit, to help raise money for research for this. There's kind of no known cure, there's some unapproved FDA treatments, things like that out there. But she's mainly looking to raise awareness and funds for research towards it. As part of the planning of this, the idea came up to host or have a beanbag tournament. And so the plan is either, well, just close first street down for that half block, it's fairly typical, maybe those types of things, from Main Street to the alley, allow out of consumption. And pending approval, we're board the HADF, possibly host it there, if there's not, currently a mountain range of snow there, because it is, and it's slated for the, what, twenty-ninth of this month. So, I guess that's the gist of it. So, if there are any questions, we have to answer them, or?
Any questions for Chris? If not, we're going to vote against the call. Make a motion to approve the event as part of... Second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Friendin.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wasslerger.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, love. Thank you, guys.
Next up, second reading, ordinance seven thirty-nine, update fines and fees. The main one that we looked at was our swimming pool classes. We did approve first reading, marked to approve by staff.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance seventy-nine.
Second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Keel.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Friendin.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wasslerger.
Yes.
All right, next up, second reading of seven forty, update the boarding wards. Basically, what this does is add some land that we have recently annexed in and put them in wards for upcoming elections. It's marked through by city staff. Motion approved, second reading, ordinance seven forty, update, voting boards as presented. Second. Any discussion? Airing none. Wasslerger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Friendin.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
All right. Last one in this group, first reading, an ordinance seven forty-one. This is to amend section eight point zero one one zero regarding extension of water and sewer services. This came along, I asked Teresa to take a look at our ordinances and make sure, if we, for lack of better words, tightened up, that we had wording in our ordinance that said if a customer is not inside the city limits of Hartford, it's at the discretion of the council to either hook him up or not hook him up. You had our city attorney look at this. Tom, anything you want to add?
Well, just a bit of history. The previous state statutes, or current state statutes require anyone within two hundred feet of a public system are required to hook onto the system. So whether you're inside or outside of a municipality, there's a two-hundred-foot requirement that if you're within that space, you need to either hook into the water sewer system. There's separate statutes, but they mirror each other with respect to the hookup. This became an issue back in the late nineties when Belfoush tried to require someone who's required to hook on. Belfoush said, "We're not going to let you unless you're next." The taxpayer, citizen, said, "No, you have to let me hook up." Supreme Court agreed with the taxpayer and said, "City, you can't refuse to serve this customer." So in two thousand, the legislature added a sentence to each of the sewer and water provisions that said, nothing in the state statute required the city to serve people outside of the municipality. So, in looking at that language and trying to make sure the city's data was protected, we thought might be beneficial to add that the city wouldn't provide any of those services outside the municipality without a pre-annexation agreement that would govern the terms and conditions in which people may hook up and come into the city at the appropriate time. So, that was the idea of the modification to eight point zero one one zero of the ordinances, so.
My question was just on the pre-annexation agreement, just so I know what that is.
Well, the city, a lot of times, if people are talking or requesting to come into the city before the annexation occurs, there can be a pre-annexation agreement to say that if you do come in, here's the rules and regulations by which you've governed all the time of annexation. So, it's just a protection to make sure that the city's protecting their rights with respect to facilities that would have to be provided when the properties annexed.
Is it fair to say you're trying to avoid little islands of...
Where there isn't services or...
Where there isn't services on annexed land.
Yep.
And there's... And there's... And there's provisions where you, and there have to be contiguous, number one, for
annexations.
Right.
Yes, it's try and make sure that the services that the city's providing are, or they're going to have to provide if someone's annexed, are designed and built adequately to city standards, so. It's going to become part of the city system if you want them to adhere to city standards.
Gotcha. So it's making sure that they follow our rules when building their facilities to hook onto our system.
My question around the pre-annexation requirement, because I read it as not a, I read that as mandatory.
If the city's going to serve outside, yes.
So how does that impact discussions we've had about potential regionalization?
If you're going to...
So say, we've been talking, we've been laying out a plan for regionalization with our wastewater treatment facility. So if we make the decision to have one of them cities working a service and take care of their wastewater, if it's a vote in discretion of the council, we can approve that, correct?
Yeah.
We have...
I don't think they would be hooking in as a customer. I mean, you'd end up doing that with a joint powers agreement, I think, with the other city.
Yeah.
Unless you end up with some separate entity.
The city, that, or that entity would be our customer, correct?
You're not going to have individual customers for other communities.
Correct. Does this specifically says persons as opposed to municipalities? Is that, is that a fair, like, differentiation? Is that a, is that a big enough word?
We can, do you want to change that to...
No, no, I'm saying, because it doesn't say municipalities, those agreements potentially might be violation of the ordinance.
Yeah, this is, I guess, with draft in mind of being individual customers that might see.
When I think of all of the properties south of East of the proposed wastewater treatment facility site, if they started asking to connect to our services, we could say, sure, as long as you sign a pre-annexation agreement. Right.
So what if, what if it is a municipality? What if it is a housing development, clearly outside city limits and not contiguous? We're going to say no, because we can't do a pre-annex?
That's not continuous.
You can do a pre-annex.
Is that really what you want to do?
Is this likely to happen? Are we going to have services somewhere that somebody can't, just randomly, I mean, they're not going to be just, you know?
I can see, you look at some breakers or some other development, clearly not contiguous, that may want services.
Mr. Mayor, for Plumb and Zion, can I speak to a couple of these?
Yes.
Because pre-annexation agreement and annexation are two completely different things. We can sign a pre-annexation agreement. It does not have to be contiguous to the city. And we do that now, anything, we're within our joint jurisdiction area. As far as the county wants to rezone, it's in our joint jurisdiction. We get a fine zoning, looks at that we either approve or not approve. And then there's a pre-annexation agreement that's required that person because they're in our joint jurisdiction, which is the area outside of the city laws. So, the annexation thing, pre-annexation as compared to annexation are two completely different issues. So if you're, some breakers want to come in, they could. And a pre-annexation agreement, they don't have to be annexed, the city to do that.
So, safe to say that it controls the, we have the opportunity to review the structural, but it doesn't stop someone outside the city limits?
Typically, a pre-annexation agreement doesn't, does have anything to do with structures that are going on there. Typically, they're just saying that, at the point in time, that the city touches their area, that they're agreeing to annex into the city.
Our current pre-annexation agreement is like Tony said, you know, if we, something's getting plotted within our growth area and it's outside the city, before we approve that plan, we make them sign a pre-annexation agreement. And that basically just says that when the city gets to them, touches on them, they're contiguous to the city, if the city asks them to annex in, they won't fight it.
But there's no, there's typically, we review all of those pre-annexation agreements. Teresa has that as part of our packet when that's an issue. So we're reviewing all of those when they, when they come forward.
So this just really adds that requirement?
It adds, and I think it's a good requirement to add on. I mean, let's say, some breakers say, "We want to get on your water and sewer, but we don't want to be in the city." Well, you're going to sign a pre-annexation agreement. At some point in time, you're going to be in the city. If you want to get onto water, you're going to have to agree that at some point in time, you're going to be on sewer. For P and C, I think it's, we would be very, I mean, thumbs up for what this is. Just about, you're talking about the customer thing, and a great point about the regionalization. Perhaps you just changed the wording there that it's metered customers, because that would, that would then be, anybody that has water service would be a metered customer. And if they have water service, they're a metered water service, and they have sewer service, so that covers both sides of customers. And then if the city wants to hook on, they're not a metered customer. They're just sending their stuff over, right? Just about the verbiage.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
It's going to be metered somehow, but, but I would think you could add some kind of verbiage to address regization separate than, like you said, individual customers, because that is a good point.
I'm just not sure if, I, I think if having a pre-annexation agreement helps in other, in a multitude of ways, then I understand that. I'm just not sure it prevents, other than we're not obligated to do the pre-annexation agreement as well as give them.
We can, we can do some tweaking of this and do another reading the next meeting if you want to address those issues.
Yeah.
That'll probably be considered a substantive change that you'd have to do a first reading next meeting, so.
Yeah, and then not deal with this one.
Right.
And I, and I think we still have in here, because, you know, only what's in yellow is what's changed, we still have in here that serving, when somebody asks to be serviced, that's still at the discretion of the city council.
Right.
It doesn't mean you have to or you don't. So, I mean, if you, and you're going to have to look at each individual situation. If you don't want to service, someone don't think we're capable, then you just go against that.
It seems like the pre-annexation agreement is a good idea.
I think it's going to deal with...
Regardless of what other things might...
But I wonder if we shouldn't just make sure, make a look at this regionalization, just make sure we're not going to...
I just want to have a...
No, I get it, yeah. When you said to me that, no, I thought, yeah. Couldn't that be a, its own standalone ordinance? Well, maybe. I don't know.
We, we'll work with Craig and Teresa and try and come up with something.
I like the wording for this. Give it in place sooner than later, personally. So I make motion to approve ordinance seven forty-one as presented. I'd second. Any more discussion? I missed what you said, or any more? Well, I like this and what the intent of it is, and so, I'll make motion to approve it. And then we can still look at the regilization and possibly add a separate.
Say, maybe we can add a section to address just regilization.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, my only concern is to make sure it's well thought out from all those angles and if...
Well, we don't want to get to that point and then say, oh, whoops.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
You know, we could do another ordinance to address...
That specific.
Regilization.
Right.
Make sure that that's treated separately than individual requests for hookups.
Right.
I think I would like to see a comeback, but I think we can, yeah.
A second.
I think it'd be nice to see everything just nice and tidy and so you can see it and all, so you know everything, all the bases are covered. Because we don't pass first reading, it's our first reading.
This is just first reading, yeah.
Then we can...
So, it's not...
Then we could make changes, right, and bring them back.
Can't be substantial changes.
It can't be substantial.
And I, you know, and if we're just adding something about excluding regilization from these requirements, you know...
That might.
That might be as easy as an additional sentence, that this, this does not apply to the city's agreement to provide joint facilities to service other municipalities or something, so.
So I got a question on the wording here, Tom. First part says, "The city may serve customers outside the municipality solely at the discretion of the council." Then the new sentence says, "The city may not provide water without the pre-annexation." So, is that saying in order for the council to approve it, there has to be an annexation? Or can we approve it without an annexation? Because it says a both ways to me.
Well, the city's, it's still left at their discretion, but if they're going to do it, you must have a pre-annexation agreement with the request of the authority.
Yeah, so my mind should say, "And the city may not provide water sewer without it."
Try to not make it a long one.
I know, I get that, but, but to me, it looks like the city could do one thing or the other thing when I read it. It doesn't say or, but it kind of implies it. But that's the way you interpret it. I trust you.
If the city provides service, the pre-annexation agreement, be placed, something like that.
Motion on the floor is to approve as, as written, correct? Yeah. And that's what you seconded, correct?
That's what I seconded.
All right, any other discussion on that? If not, let's vote on this one. Wasslerger. I'd like to see a comeback, no. Okay, Mattson.
No.
Friendin.
Yeah.
Keel.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Were you a yes or no?
I was a no.
Okay.
No.
Tom.
So we're three and three? So then in this instance, do I get to say?
Doesn't involve money, so yeah.
Thank you. Jeez, Louise. Is this your first time reading? It's so easy. I was hoping you guys would put me out of the...
You say no, or just rewrite it? Or split that back?
I'd say no, I'm going to say no. Let's, let's put it back and let's put the other wording in. All right. But let's get it at the next meeting. I like to go on as president of the council, then I could vote and talk and do all of that.
Congratulations, having your first vote as mayor.
All right, let's move down to reports. Deputy Hartis.
Hello, everyone. So you guys got the, my report, right? You guys saw an increase of public services. We had a forty-three, which averaged about seven point three three calls per day. Nothing big besides just extra enforcement on traffic control and stuff. Spring coming up. So, we're just out there just trying to road safe and stuff, especially thirty-eight and make some road. And the, those are the big, oh, cold roads as well, too. So a lot stops there that I saw. And stuff, but nothing big to really address here. Any concerns or questions for you?
Question on the warrant services. Is that something that sometimes at the county level becomes a priority? Or is that just literally cyclical? It's just, it's an increase of seven, that's a big one.
Yeah, so we don't, I would say like the field, I mean, like normal patrol, they, there's a big push on warrants and civil services. But in Hartford, we just had a couple, a lot of like speeding ticket warrants that came out, seatbelt tickets. So nothing big or anything like that, just educating people. Okay, you know, when you give a speeding ticket, you got to pay for it. If not, then there's a low rest warrant that comes out. So, yeah, that's basically what the warrant services did.
I did miss during duty one time, so I was curious.
We, we did sell a card with a speeding ticket in the glove box one time.
Thank you. All right.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Chamber Economic Development Director reporting.
My information is in fact, I have one update for the chamber, which is, they had a really nice mixer this evening prior to coming here. With the bad weather, we think there was going to be a nice turnout. It turned out very nice, so I was very happy for the Hartford Spinal Care Group with the nice mixer they put together. And then just a reminder that April seventeenth to the twenty-first, I will be attending the Hartford Economic Development Course, so I will not be in attendance at the next council meeting. I will have a report prepared though.
Amy, there's a good chance people don't consider this bad weather anymore.
I know, I know, but they were worried this morning, at seven o'clock this morning, they were worried that it was not going to be a nice turnout. But I sent out a very nice reminder email, so I think got people's mood.
All right, any questions for Amy? All right, thank you. City Engineer Report.
Good evening, everyone. Didn't make the report, but wanted to give you a quick update on the elementary school funding. That addition, we did define, constantly going back and forth with the engineer. They did add a little parking area towards the south side by the maintenance shop where they have that proposed building, I believe it's off of the current building. They're going to have parking there, which will be on their account. And then we did recommend, based on your input, the city, Teresa McCrae's input, that they forego with the angled parking, just keep it parallel parking on the street, just to reduce the amount of movements from, you know, stopped, stops to going to the street. So trying to reduce that even slightly. That and truthfully, if they did the angled parking, they would use that parking area there maybe. So, just wanted to be realistic with them. So we'll see, we'll see what they come back with. Otherwise, they will, they'll be moving on that here shortly. No updates for me on the Water Resource Recovery Facility. We'll discuss more of that later on when Wade and Rachel give an update on the cost model regarding the bike and water trail. We did finally get the model from FEMA, and we have been going through the preliminary model of that and carrying our, you know, first shot of the service, making sure there's no rise to the FEMA model. We are very close, which bodes well. A lot of times we get a footers old rise, which is not good when you need no rise. So working through that. So we'll, once we get that new spot, we'll, we'll push forward with, with final plans for, for your input on, on what Teresa's action items later in the report. And then get that submitted back to FEMA and at construction yet this year. Last one is quick update on the Highway three A waterway extension. We did get that funding application for the, for the loan fund submitted last week, so that is in their hands, waiting for approval. Last we heard from Andy, it was maybe about a June, July timeline, to take your on funding JADI borders, who can go up to bed and get that in July of this year.
It did get put on the state water plan this last week. You're going to have it on the state water plan first, and then they can look through your application. So, last week they did put it on the state water plan, because we wait for that as well. So, now they can go forward with the application review.
That's all the updates I have for you guys. Are there any questions?
Any questions for ISK? Yeah, we'll save, we'll save that question.
Thank you.
For Rachel. All right, thanks. Public Works Superintendent, no alert, Craig.
Yeah. Might have to get one out for you.
Yeah, let's do, do one tonight, just for old times' sake.
Get some more kickin', honey. So, for my report, that's just any updates. We're still discharging at the lagoons, that's going well. They have the contractor that's doing the bathroom floors and the parks, got in there today, and they got a bunch of the drawing out and getting ready to put the finish on it. As soon as, maybe next week, I think it's worth looking at now. The gauge, we're hoping to actually texture that tomorrow and hopefully get painted this weekend, so, two, two sides, so. And the whole new additional air was all been taped and muddied. Ready to go, so we're moving ahead with it.
Good. I noticed Leslie's been posting some stuff on the library, DL two. Yeah, it really does. It looks good. Yeah, I've got a quick public comments about that. Yeah. A question for you about fire hydrant on RT. My neighbors were wondering about the small Chinese balloon that seems to be covering it.
Yep.
Yeah. What's the status? What's the story?
So last fall, well, we noticed that, I guess, last spring, it had froze because it was leaking, and broke the top. We got in the top, worked the guys, pushed it good, and could not get it to seep, so needs a new seat in it.
Okay.
And the guy that has the tools to do that couldn't do it last fall.
Got it.
So we are hoping it didn't freeze and break again, because they drained it down or pumped it down that to get it...
It's not permanent, it's not permanently out of repair?
No, it'll be, they can put new guts in without having to dig them up and do it, but you got to have...
Yeah, that's me as an insurance agent of all things, so.
And those are not your typical fire hydrants, so.
Okay.
The trucks will not hook up to them because they're not enough flow.
I did share that with him.
I did.
I, I shared that with him, too. Oh, did you get a call?
He called.
Oh, you did?
Somebody called me about two months ago, three months ago.
Oh, this, this, you were supposed to be here for public. I said, "Come on, now, we'd love to see your face."
Yeah, so, that whole lottery up there does not...
Well, what's the purpose then?
The, more than anything, those hydrants, I mean, you can get water on them, but they don't have the scheme or the five or four and a half on them, five inch, so they cannot pump off. So they cannot pump off them, it's only a six inch main that feeds that whole area, so if they would hook up to any of their trucks, they would suck you in. And vacuum all the lines and claps lines on them, so. So you can fill like a water truck with them and stuff like that, because you're not gonna over, pump it, they're not sucking, actually sucking the water out of it.
So like, you seen the kids playing in the street with the fire hydrant, that's really all it's good for?
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah, except they're all facing along directions, so it's gonna be in yards. But that's why, as soon as we get chance this spring, we'll get it fixed, so.
Man, I'm glad I moved.
We can, we can still all.
I just wish the city would push this along, but.
Yeah, I used to have comfort, so.
Anybody else, my questions are very important.
No, nothing else, I see you got a couple action items on here for some training that you would like to go to?
Yep, I'd like to, the first was a water and wastewater seminar. I am on the board of the operators and I have a board meeting on eighteenth at two o'clock. So I'd like to go out and bring James, our new guy, out there, get him familiar with some training and stuff. But we'd be leaving on the eighteenth and come back on the twentieth, that's in Peter.
Okay.
That's the first one, then the other one is the street municipal maintenance one, and Jesse and I would like to attend that.
That one's a yanked and had.
And I am off the board on that one, so I'm just going as a attendee.
All right.
My motion to approve the training request for Craig and James to go to the wastewater seminar.
All right. Any discussion on that one? If not, we'll vote. Keel. Jay. Jazz.
O'Hara. I was a yes. Just for the record, I was a yes.
Geez, I jumped. Just wait.
Your first vote, now you can.
I'm jumping.
Yes.
Mattson. And Loslawi. All right. How about the second one?
Should I look at the cost on that one?
The second one's actually free. Our municipal association, the street association's got so much money in our account that we give free trainings.
So that's the right price then?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the training request for Street Maintenance Association.
Any discussion on that? Not, we'll vote. Loslawi.
Yes.
Yes.
Brennman.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Thank you. Yeah, we get in trouble every year for having too much money in our account.
Okay. It's a good problem to have.
We're all, we're all street guys, we're used to saving money.
Maybe we should move some of that snowing over.
All right, thanks Craig.
Yep, thank you.
Karen, anything to add?
No, my report's in the packet and nothing to add unless you have questions.
I see we told you to get rid of the brackets, you did. That's awesome. All right. Any questions for Karen? All right, thank you. Teresa, anything to add here?
Just a couple things. We did open our yard waste site on Saturday on schedule, and there were a few people that came, I was told, so that's good. And also last week, I, we received a check from FEMA, a payment for our three welcome signs, our monument signs, so with the insurance and the check with that, and then what we had left in reserves from our marketing, those have all been covered from FEMA and that. So I'm working with fast signs to go ahead and get those produced, so we can get them replaced and get new ones ordered. And along that kind of same line, we are doing the new welcome sign, which three of our utilities, Old Don West, Midco and Subelli are, are paying for the majority of that. We're figuring putting that out at exit three ninety. I just received, just yesterday, the last logo for that, so I will send all that to fast signs too, so they can get that produced and, uh, whether it allows and we can, Subelli's said that they, or noted that they would help with the poles and get it up too, so then we can get that structure up. So we're moving ahead with those and, and getting going on it. The only other thing I just want to mention is that I've been talking with Scott Bus about our, our water contract is coming up next year of what we get allocated from our waters, so. Talking to him about when we start negotiating that, when he needs information from us. Right now, they're asking all the cities to kind of think about what we want to ask for allocations, or what we think our future needs would be, and they're gonna review that kind of this fall. So I just want to put that bug in here and start thinking about, obviously, you know, we'll look at our newly annexed land and, you know, developments on the horizon and try to figure out, you know, what we think's a reasonable need, but once you guys start thinking about it too, and if you have any input, let us know, because next few months, we will start talking with them and. I know they, their water's limited, like everything on the eastern side of the state, they've indicated that to us, we have a good allocation now. I'm hoping to at least keep that allocation. Little scuttle of taking some away from us, and I hope we don't go down that road, so I think with kind of some of the newly annexed land, we can maybe justify the allocations we got and keep going. So make sure we have more water for the next twenty years.
How long does that come up for, you know?
Fifteen year contract? Oh, the twenty year?
Twenty, yeah. Yeah, two thousand and five, I think.
Yeah, I think maybe you're right, yeah, I'd have to look at for sure, so I mean.
Go ahead, Karen.
Sorry, Tony. Yeah, so it is, it's typically a twenty year contract, I don't know, was that Bus?
Yeah, that's probably something.
But there's also, that's not, that's just, that's not.
Oh, you should say who you are.
Oh, I'm Sean Bow. Okay. Am I looking at the camera?
Yeah.
It is a twenty year contract, that's, but that, there was a gentleman who visited the H A D F, but that's also negotiable. So I think that's just kind of a rule of thumb that, that they use, so right now, our city, I think gallons per day, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, we use approximately six hundred and forty thousand. Rough numbers, we're allocated at two point one million gallons per day. So we're using like thirty-nine percent of that. But yeah, I think getting ahead of it, getting, getting ahead of negotiations and we definitely don't want to go backwards, we wanna, in my opinion, be selfish as much as we want, or as much as we can get, so.
Twenty years is a long time.
That's the point.
Yeah, so.
I'll be surprised if we get a twenty, I hope we can get a twenty year contract.
Yeah, so Sean is an H A D F member, you know, usually the top two requests are, how much water do you have and how much water can you treat?
Just want to kind of give that update, we'll keep working with them.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Teresa?
No, that's all I got.
All right, we're gonna head down to new business. First item up, discuss fee for placement permits. In the packet is the information regarding what's driving this, we've been doing permits for fences and sheds for, since two thousand and ten, and have not charged for sheds, small sheds.
Correct.
And this would add a twenty dollar fee for placement permit for sheds of under, three hundred?
Under a hundred and twenty square feet, and then any fences. Yeah, like the mayor said, we, we just right now do placement permits, just so we can get people in here, go over the regulations with them, make sure, you know, they're placed in the right spot, you know, avoid any future problems of having to get them moved or whatnot. The Planning and Zoning Board discussed this last week. In your package, it's kind of a comparison of what other cities do, so most other cities do charge for this. And there are costs associated with issuing permit, I mean, obviously, you know, you've got the ministry, the paperwork, you've got staff time of going over regulations with them, and then we, we do inspect them too, you know, follow up with the building inspector to make sure they're placed correctly, so there are, you know, costs associated with doing this. Currently, you know, we also require a permit for flat work, and not for sidewalks, but any other kind of, that's at a flat twenty dollars, so. What I suggested, the Planning and Zoning Board, just for consistency, just twenty dollars for fence permits and then any permit for a shed under a hundred and twenty square feet, that's a twenty as well, so. That's my suggestion to start off with.
All right, any action from the council on this?
Motion to approve. Fee for placement permits as proven to.
Any discussion?
Yes. That all of those minimums should be reviewed, I think, twenty, twenty-four, prior to twenty twenty-four, for sure, that, maybe all the increases will come up to another level.
Like, um.
We discussed previously.
I said, like we discussed, yeah, previously, you know, our friends, we kind of review that every fall before the upcoming year, we just did it this last year. This fall, yes, we'll review it all again to look at all our fees for everything.
And then what is the penalty or fine or consequence if you don't do, if you don't get the placement permit?
If you don't pull a permit, we can find up to two hundred dollars.
Okay, I, I assume so, there just wasn't any wording in here, specifically?
That's in our ordinance, it's a general, just last sentence of our ordinance is, you know, if it's not specified anywhere else, the city can charge up to two hundred dollars or fine, yeah.
And I thought I had two, but third question, how will our residents find out about this, how do we share this information? I put it in the website.
Well, I say we definitely put it on the website, like we do.
Put it in the newsletter.
Put it in the newsletter.
Or you get an email saying, did you know you were supposed to pay a fee for this?
You know, they do have to come in here to get the permit, so obviously it's gonna be stated on the permit too, but yeah, it'll be on our website, the newsletter.
I got my city email today, and I think if you attach any of this information to Terry Hagan's picture, people will pay attention.
I'm glad you noticed, Terry.
All right, any other discussion on this man? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara. Jazz.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brennman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Loslawi. All right, next up, discuss width, cost, estimates for the trail between Main and Fire. So this is, Michael mentioned that we've been working on this trail. We've decided to go, we've got some options here to go to eight foot instead of ten foot, is that correct?
So, you know, this trail, we've been working on it for a little while here, it gets really narrow on the east end. We tried to secure an easement from the property owner there, we can't do it. We have a grant from the G F M P for a portion of it. They, we asked them if we could move the trail to the south side, that doesn't correspond with the grant we received, so we've got to keep it on the north side of the creek. They have indicated that they will allow us to go down to eight foot. We believe we can fit it in on the east side, I S G looked at that, we can keep it on the city's property if we go down to eight foot. So really now the question for you guys is, do we want to have ten foot as planned on the west side, and then where we need to narrow it down on the east side, go to eight foot? Or do we want to get a little cost saving, it's not tons, but you know, we're already over budget on this, because we also have to add a retaining wall and prices have gone up and whatnot. Or do we want to basically do eight foot the entire length, because it sounds like the, the ambition parks will allow us to do eight foot and do a little cost savings if that is what we go with. But they need to know which way we want to go, so then I S G can, like I said, you know, revise their plans and we can get that submitted, so we can move forward with it. We did talk this over with the Parker and Rec Board at their meeting. Once again, gave them the same options, kind of got their input on it. Basically, the consensus was from them was that the trail, you know, just for consistency wise, you know, they're okay with it all, that's actually all being eight foot, because on both ends, they don't connect up to a ten foot trail at either side, you know, they've got just a sidewalk on Fire, and right now we don't have sidewalk at all on Main, and in the future, we don't want to have a sidewalk there, so, you know, a ten foot isn't connecting into a ten foot, and it's going down anyway, so. Basically, it was a consensus of them to do eight foot all the way across and try to get whatever savings we can from that, so.
Did we touch races with the home water again to let them know we'd be doing it despite the back of easement?
I left a message for it to call me, never heard it much.
I think, pre, pre-fred a couple times and she hasn't responded, so.
So the, the properties on the north side, those property lines, obviously outside of the floodplain are not?
No, no, and that's kind of what Michael alluded to with him. We're working with FEMA, we've got their model, their flooding model, believes we'll, we can't cause a rise into the stream there in order to put this trail there. So that's why they've been working with the FEMA's flooding model, they, they believe we can achieve that, so.
You know, there's a talking point there with those folks, if they granted or gifted some land to the city, get them out of the floodplain, there's any discussion there that could be had?
Their properties are all too low, we even looked at, there was shrubbery and stuff, and we came up that the shrubs have to be a foot or five foot apart in order to even keep the rise, so.
No matter what, would you?
Based on the current flood maps, those, that hundred year flood boundary is right in their houses.
I would say, majority of it.
Wouldn't do much to. Series of unfortunate events.
Pretty much.
All right, so the decision you're looking for us to make is if we're okay going eight foot wide, you just want us to.
The decision is, do, yeah, do you want to go eight foot the entire length, or do you want to do?
Fire hydrant.
Yeah.
Making motion to approve true with the pace with the entire length, it's in Main and Fire Avenue.
All right, any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. Brennman.
Yes.
Yes.
Loslawi.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
O'Hara. All right.
Okay.
Here on it. All right, next up, review, approve tax abatement for parcel number two three eight one nine, it was in the packets.
Motion to approve tax abatement for parcel two three eight one nine.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara.
Yes.
Jazz.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brennman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
All right. Next up, and last on their new business, is an update on our wastewater treatment plant or water recovery and reclamation facility.
I think, just let those officials stand for it.
Rachel, Wade, good to see ya, it's been twenty-four hours.
So just an updating where we're at, we are planning on producing ninety percent, or we consider internal hundred percent coming inside of mid-April, so we've got an internal set that we published on twelve April to finish publishing, so that we're not responding to things of their first period of some things, moving that direction. And so that we go forward on pulling that final G M P together and, and we, like it's magic, are getting the tractors together, so.
Yeah, we went through, last time we're here, and the shared pricing went up a little bit, we've had a bunch of ups and downs, run through the numbers, some went down, some went up. It's just been the nature of the world up there. Worked with Teresa and Craig a fair amount to keep things alive. Craig sacrificed a fair amount yesterday.
But make sure that they know, we're, we did sacrifice, but we are not building a lesser plant.
No, he gave up some storage.
Correct.
No, yeah, so the, the plant design has not changed at all, we're still at the same capacity, we've still got the same growth capacity, so this kind of goes into our ten year growth plan. So the wastewater treatment plan is designed for twenty year growth at five percent annual growth per year, which is incredibly aggressive, as well as additional non-gallons of extra allocation, whether that be for regeneration or additional commercial industrial customers that are coming to play. So nothing has been changed on that end, we've just optimized a lot of the auxiliary components of, yeah, the building, just kind of making sure we've got what we want, what we need and what we want, and, and nothing more. Focusing on just optimization, one common hero is. One common fear is the rebar, this is an incredible amount of concrete in this plant, as we know, the rebar went up $80,000, I think, to turn us. So just, you know, fine-tuning that design, we're going to thin that up, we're going to optimize without sacrificing a structural integrity of the system, so. Continuing work through that process.
And what was, what was the numbers you guys shared regarding concrete yet? Was, it's, like, was it like 20% it's up again?
Uh, rebar was going up a lot, the concrete, the actual pricing of itself hasn't, it's gone up a fair amount. We haven't nailed that down yet, I mean, we're still just, until we go tell people to give us a real price, it's still kind of fluffy, let's call it.
Why is the, under the lift station, the electrical general is? What happened?
Because we did, at the electrical, what we did is if you, if you look at what previous, we looked at it as a very simple little lift station, knowing that we have, you're going to take your generator out there, we have automatic reactors which, which have been not thought about before, or not included by us. And then, there's also a fair amount of of controls, so it's going to be, the wastewater plant's going to talk to the lift station, so people can go have to go there.
Can we change that?
You know, changing plans, it was more of just where it was allocated.
Yeah, okay, we tried, going through this process, it's kind of like, what we tried to do here, and this sheet will change once we go get bids. We've tried to break it down by structure here, so we can look at it and see what's important and what's not. And sometimes the dollars don't give the right structure until we get a little farther along. So we did move a bunch of it up there, overall, the electrical went up on a whole project. But if you take that number, and you add it with the plant and the controls that went up, lead times on electric fires are continuing to be awful. We're told 60 weeks on a switchgear after approval right now.
I'm sorry, that.
No, it, they have 12 weeks to get it, the shot drawings, and a couple weeks for Rachel to look at it.
Transformers. I see the transformers are, it's five years. Long time. Some sort of transformers.
So, this number down in the right-hand corner, the 21,186, that is the number after we removed. Because we were in, no, are in February, we were at 20,943, so in essence, we're about 240,000 higher than we were in February. And I asked you guys yesterday, when we met, when do we get the guaranteed maximum price? And I think you said to me, Wade, well, when do you want, when are we going to quarter, or when are we, you know, what do you?
When are you going to tell me how much you want to spend?
We want to spend about $10 million.
Eighteen, nine?
Yeah.
We're going to spend two years.
Believe me, it's, in a contractor, it's a fucking, you keep the pricing on a spearhead. The process going forward is, if you, you know, for me, if the city, everyone's happy, or reasonably happy, or moderately happy with the number, then Rachel's firm will go finish. We'll get the drawings ready to go out and get it. Right, and so, then at that point, when you got that ready, we'll refine this number, then we'll go out and pick up bids, and we'll see, we'll generate the bottom right-hand corner number, that's going to be just the so.
Okay. So, we've been talking about the AEROMOD, it's only one provider of that. Is, is there, in your, in the industry, is it unheard of to lock in set pricing in 2022 for 2023 if you provide a X amount down payment?
So, you're worried about the AEROMOD price going up?
Yeah, I see it keep going up and up and up.
I think, I think where we're at with that, their delivery times are actually fairly good. They don't have a lot of instrumentation or, right? And the base, the basis of their fee is, there's a lot of pipe and diffusers and hardware.
Sure.
Lithium-sulfide, right away.
Okay.
And instead of like saying, we don't want it delivered for a year and a half.
Right.
If I was to, you know, schedule-wise, I would hope we would get all your AEROMOD equipment in here next spring, and all your equipment in your tank. Once we get real electrical lead times, that's going to be to go back to their content. Bring up the look at when, when the switchgears will be delivered, when parts will be delivered, because going forward, the concrete builds in buildings, we can get that done way before that stuff's going to show up. So it's, one of the things we looked at is reducing our duration of time on the job, because we're going to go, there's going to be a gap in there somewhere. Where it doesn't pay, just hang out, so.
So, yeah, I'm looking at the 2.5 in January, and had we said that we're not changing from there, AEROMOD, here's 20% down, what do we have to save, 300,000? That's, so does that exist in the industry?
Well, you know, that, that in January, they're at, well, in November, they're at 300, and in January, they went to 2.5. The, the part you're seeing, the increase you're seeing down below, that's from really just refining the design from the beginning file that they were going to build. At that.
Where it went from 1.4 to 1.8.
That's just, there's a lot more parts and pieces than we were aware of, once we got their final design.
Sure, sure.
So, yeah.
I'm looking at line item, yeah, kind of. Well, I see, updated AEROMOD drawings at 300,000 to line item concrete materials, and then updated AEROMOD drawings there for the actual AEROMOD system is another 400, something like that.
The first line is the specific package thing, or the concrete, obviously, so that comes back to the times, so we borrow that component, that's all on us and ISG, and then the second line is the AEROMOD equipment, so this is the PO that you write to AEROMOD.
Yeah.
They asked us to add $20,000 to their current pricing that they've given us, just as an allocation of a whole place. One of the borrowers, I think, that they got are the, specifically the AEROMOD components that they're looking for, but they've been pretty steady on that end. And then to wait for the RCC, our SCG material is the auxiliary piping, which, as we're refining and finalizing that design, there's some auxiliary piping that is how to connect the AEROMOD up, so giving our piping to the AEROMOD and vice versa, as we detail that and get more clarity, and we did some stuff today where we reduced a couple, you know, several feet of pipe as well, so it's kind of fluctuating as we're finalizing that, the finalization.
What do we expect the technology package line item to become?
That's the one that says not to. And far as, we had a meeting, and, I mean, there's some discussion, I guess, there is a plan sheet that hasn't shown.
We, yeah, we did do a design layout for, the technology is specific to cameras. So all the controls and everything like that for the system, that's all in a different line item. The technology is specifically for security cameras. So we did line item, and I think we've got that out for quotes right now, to see what that looks like as far as the package.
Security cameras inside and outside the building?
That's correct, yeah, just in our trade package where you can, I think, where do we end up having, like, eight total? And you can pick and choose what you wanted, and just decide whether you want it at that time, or maybe you don't want it at that time. Which is why it's.
13 to 30,000.
Yeah.
And for us, we just, you guys might as well deal with the people you're going to deal with the rest of your, your career on it, and if we can slap it in here if you want at any point, it makes sense for the certificate.
Yeah, but their technology, yeah, technology is just security cameras, that's all that is.
I don't think it's going to get any cheaper.
No.
Yeah.
Well, we don't know, when you go on, when you take the package out.
I'm going to opt for this too. But things aren't.
But the commodity that only, the only commodity that I've seen depreciating is wood.
Yeah.
We don't have a ton of wood in this, too.
Nothing, nothing, nothing's going to come down here as fast as it went up, I don't believe this is ever going to come down.
Right.
We're, we're all used to paying as much as we are now for everything we go buy, and to have that back up.
Right.
For buying shipping containers from China, maybe, you know, we'd be okay with that. Right, and, and as far as it going down, a lot of the numbers in here are, are, you know, the work that we price, yeah, that can potentially go down, that won't go up, the concrete won't, won't go up, it shouldn't go up, we'll go get pricing. It should go down a little bit, the concrete price, it'll be a rebar price, and it would get quoted on it, and it lasts, but it lasts. But if there are more, it's going to be the number that's on the species paper, so.
You won't, you won't. I heard there's a lot more to try to be pricing, to use coming this year.
There's probably more than one. And, and the biggest, the biggest one on here is, you know, is electrical. And we've had an electrician look at it twice, it's a lot of wastewater plants, so we believe the number's good. But then it comes down to what kind, when we go bidding with competition, is, you know, we're busy, not busy, what they can get and what they can't get.
So what we're looking forward tonight is, if the council's comfortable with the 21,186,000 dollar number, that we motion second and vote, and that gives Rachel the ability or the authority, basically, to finish the design, and for Wade and the Rice Lake group to take this thing out to bid, correct? Is that what we're after today?
No, I, I think. In my head, you guys want her to pitch design, and you want us to come back with a number and say this is the number we think is going to be, and then tell us to go bid. That's how I feel. I think she has some stuff to take and get back on the drawings. The number you see here isn't the number we gave her last week, we have a lot of discussions after that, right? To get it back closer to that. So just take that and incorporate it in their plans, for both the spec review, we want to talk about different front-end documents today and stuff as a group, I would say, we'll come back, we'll get the plans, we'll relook, make sure that number's still the number we believe now, and then if you're happy, say go bid.
So do you have a different, that's. So tonight, you don't need any action from us?
We don't need any action, this is just a normal.
Okay, I just wanted to, I just want to make sure.
No, and I get nervous, I mean, honestly, I'm with you, like, at what point do we?
Right, that's why I'm asking this question, as I asked you the other day when we were sitting right there. I want, I want to get this thing to a point where we know, because I think, as I reminded you, I'm the guy that's going to have to stand in front of the citizens and tell them what we're going to do, and that there's a potential, you've got to be careful how I say this, that we're going to have to put on another surcharge, and we know how that's going to go over.
I would say, we take from now until your next, not the two-week meeting, but your next.
First meeting in May.
First week in May, we come back, you tell us the, the things out to get, we can have some data just together, but then Rachel will have her stuff done in the next couple of weeks, we'll roll through it, we'll make sure Craig's happy with what, what you agreed to, your ability to see in drawings, right? And then you guys will have a flight.
I'm hearing they can't put it out to bid, because they don't know what they're bidding out of there.
No, that's not, no, that's not the case, like.
I don't mean that in a derogatory manner, I just mean, if you've got to go back through the specs, make sure everything is lining up, there's still room for changes.
There, there's some cleanup work that needs to be done, absolutely.
I mean, we removed probably close to a million dollars worth of, we, we removed close to a million dollars worth of stuff yesterday, so. I can tell you that, because I was sat there when they were doing it.
This is June, third work being, this is May, third work.
Yeah, we were talking, I was talking about that with our superintendent, that's going to come here, I guess, thinking, if you have some coming up till the 4th of July, it'll show up here. If we follow this path, goal would be to come, the AEROMOD system's 170 by 170-foot tank, 16 or 18 feet in the ground every year. So the first thing we'll come do is dig that, we'll, we'll work on that through the fall. We need to have a reprocess and shot drawings and getting everything else approved. Hopefully to get it delivered next year, next year, we build the, get the building built, we have a bunch of the other stuff on. Utilities work associated, get that out there, we'll figure out when staffs put that out for bids. And then, in my mind, we're going to get to a point where late next fall, or later, we're going to be showing some electrical components, and we're going to wait for them, and we'll, we'll get as much out as we can. We're not going to say what we're, we'd like to come build it, and then go away on a pretty long, it's about to show up, okay?
I ordered some stuff in November of 2021, 12 pages of, which I forgot, it showed up today.
12 pages of stuff, so hey, those three tags are getting shorter.
The good thing is, it's never the same thing, right? Never, so it isn't ever a piece, we're waiting for it.
All right, any other questions for these guys? So first meeting in May, we're going to be looking at, potentially, that'll be the night we're going to have to make the vote and say us to screen light this deal. Okay? All right? All right.
Cool.
Thanks, you guys. Teresa wants these back.
Take pictures of them?
No.
You'll take pictures of them?
No.
All right. That brings us to the end, I want to make one comment, before we go, April 11th, we have a city election. Our two gentlemen vying for our Ward 2 seat are here, if you happen to live in Ward 2, make sure you go vote. Uh, we are going to go into exec.
Motion to move to executive for personnel and account development.
All right. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? All right. Wow, that's a.
I like the motion to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right.